I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome everyone. We will have roll call. Councilmember Sharpie. Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Bus. Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
And Councilmember Batchra will be a little late. Expect her to arrive. Also at the table on my left is City Administrator Newsom, and I believe City Attorney Arnison is on the phone.
Judge Crack, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and welcome Ross. All right, with roll call out of the way, I would ask, is there any changes to the agenda?
I have one change. I need to remove from the consent agenda. The hearing is F on the consent agenda, Sarah Halverson.
Sarah Halverson, okay.
She did not have all of her paperwork yet.
Okay. So then G becomes F. All right, anything else? Hearing none, the motion is in order to approve the consent, approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bus, second by Councilmember Thomas to approve the agenda with that one change noted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried. Moving into the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Item A, approval of the bills. Item B, January 19th, 2021 council minutes. Item C, approve the hiring of Jeremy Otto as safety officer, or I should say the appointing Jeremy Otto as safety officer for the Arlington Fire Department. Item D, approve hiring of Derek Hahn as part-time firefighter for the Arlington Fire Department. Item E, approve hiring of Dana Lemke as EMT student with the Arlington Area Ambulance. And then item G would, or item F, I'm sorry, would be to approve the hiring of Pat Neer as paramedic with Arlington Area Ambulance.
Just one question. What number would that fireman be? Was that 29th or 30th, or do you know?
Be 30.
30?
30.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Sharpie to approve the consent agenda is read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Moving on to item number five, addressing the council. Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to address the council at this time? Hearing none, move on to announcements, item six.
Liquor stores for sale. Please spread the word. Renee had asked me to put together an ad for the liquor store. And we've gotten quite a few calls on it, but I just wanted to share it with council, so it's out there with all of you. If you know anyone, price is negotiable.
Are they not listing the price kind of like the bakery, or is that just?
They had a listing price on Bizzley North. But then she asked me to make it negotiable.
I believe the bakery's price is on Bizzley North also.
And this is for the business, and then it would be a separate dollar mark for the inventory. And they rent that space, so they do not own that building.
Okay, any questions on that? Hearing none, move on to item seven, communications.
We received a message from the law firm. I'm not sure how to say that.
Gislyson.
Gislyson, thank you, and Hunter. They're working on High Island Creek Watershed District rules. And we were invited to a meeting on March 22nd, 2001, at 7:00 p.m. at the New Auburn Township Hall. So the proposed changes were in the backpack. If you have any questions and would like to attend that meeting, you're more than welcome to give your comments.
Yeah, I looked through it and paged through it, being I've got some land that's in this, as the city of Arlington is also, but it's a lot of, a lot of minor changes and yeah, yeah, so actually, yeah, it's not been redone for quite a while, so. Any questions on that? Okay, go ahead.
Next is the January MMPA Board Director summary that comes out every month. Let me know if you have any questions on that. We also received a year-end review. They presented a PowerPoint presentation, which is also included in the packet. COVID is the big key to a lot of these presentations and how COVID has affected. I'm sure the rates were low, lower than expected. And let me know if you have any questions about this. I can bring it to the next MMPA meeting. We received a thank you from Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. The EDA gave them $500. The Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation has been very generous to Arlington. They gave us a $20,000 grant for Choose Arlington in 2019, which was just closed out at the end of 2020. Here is the information from the Arlington Historical Society. They will be giving their annual report at the next meeting. The mayor and I attended their meeting this morning. It was in council chambers here. They were also affected by COVID, so they were not open much last year. They have a couple new board members. I think they got to see the meet today. And that is all I have. The next would be Jamie.
Okay, Jamie, make sure that microphone is on.
And bring it close to you.
Okay.
That one does not pick up as well.
Okay.
Do you want to just tell me? Want to just scroll?
Certainly.
Make note of Michelle arriving at 6:35. Excuse me, thank you.
Yeah, go for it. Should have all received a copy of the annual report. If you go through just the first few pages, it just talks about the introduction, who we are, our staff, partner agencies, and the list of townships along with our primary service area on page four there. I'm just going to kind of go through it, and if you guys have questions, feel free to let me know. So you can see that we just made sure to list all of our partner agencies, everybody who we work together with, including the fire departments and ambulance services that surround our primary service area. And then also towards the bottom of that page, made sure to list the townships that were included in that service area as well. The next is just a visual of the size of our service area. I wanted, yep. Oh, nice. All right, so yes, we are located there in the pink. The upper right-hand corner, that's going to be a Ridgeview service area, as well as the lower left-hand, or I'm sorry, lower right-hand corner is also Ridgeview. And if you see to the left there, that yellow towards Gaylord, that is the Gaylord Ambulance Service Area. It's managed by Ridgeview there. And then to the north of that, so in the upper left-hand corner, that's actually going to be a Lina, primary service area. And we'll go to the next page. So this one just talks about the highlights and different accomplishments that we were able to do here this last year regarding like our part-time ALS services, any of the new hires, any type of recognition that we've been giving to any of our members, and then also to regarding the trainings that we've gone through. All right, just kind of a continuation up at the supplies and equipments. So there were several items that were attained during the test merger period, and then there was one particular piece of equipment that we obtained after the test merger. And that's kind of the description on that second paragraph there about the PD mate transport device. So the graph below that, those are the calls for service. So I kind of broke it down as far as like month by month, and I did put a notation at the bottom there. You can kind of see that the whole COVID issue is kind of reflected in this graph, actually pretty blatantly. About the time of when they decided to do the shutdowns and the stay-at-home orders, you can see how the calls for services dropped twice throughout last year. And then peaked after the fact due to the illnesses and so on. That kind of were a result of some of those calls. But yeah, out of the total there is the 416 calls for service, and that was from January 1st to December 31st. Any questions about that one?
Do you have a comparison to last year?
I don't, no. Nope. All right, so this is just kind of a breakdown of why we were dispatched. So this is just the difference in dispatch requests. And at the backside of this report, I did put in a list of definitions and such, but I'll kind of explain it too for what you see up here. So as far as dispatch reasoning, there were the 911s, the inter-facility transfers, which would constitute as like a hospital-to-hospital, higher level of care transfers. And medical transports would be comparable to hospital-to-nursing home, long-term care facilities, and so on and so forth. And then the standbys, which would either be for fire, which would either be for police, or for the high school for their football games and such. That would be in that category. Then below that, I wanted to list the average response times. And I did the en route time, so the time that we were paged, the time that our crew was actively on the road responding to whatever call that was. I kept it as the 911s, whereas the inter-facility transfers, unless they're emergent, I kind of opted to keep them out of that, that picture. Because the main issue I wanted to address was the actual 911s, beans that our service area is so big. So yeah, I have a couple notations at the bottom there regarding through the test merger versus after the test merger. There is about a one-minute difference, which is nice. And for our city policy, they do require us to be at least en route at the eight-minute response time. So based off of those numbers, I want to say our crew's been doing very, very good. It's excellent. And we'll go to the next one. This you'll see just kind of a breakdown of the ambulance calls per township. Clearly, you can see Arlington is way, way much higher than the rest of them because we do have that facility that's within the city limits that also gives us our transfers. But I did do a breakdown in regards to the calls for service within the city of Arlington versus Arlington Township. And the city of Arlington calls are listed at the bottom there. There was 302 versus the 317. So the 317 would be within the township itself, and the 302 would be within the city of Arlington. I did the same too also for Green Isle as well. Any questions about that? No? Okay. And then last but not least, I wanted to list a few goals that we would like to obtain for 2021. You know, just continuing with the continuity of care, and then also maintaining and building more relationships with other services and other entities within our PSA. This is kind of big right now. We want to continue that route. And then, like I said, the last two pages are just definitions and acronyms. So if there's any questions regarding, you know, what would be what, this is kind of a nice definition page to kind of give you an idea on how some of those items are explained.
Thank you for the list of acronyms.
You're very welcome.
I don't know how many meetings I was to that I had no idea what. Yeah, there we go.
Yep.
Love it.
There, there. It's just kind of help better understand too on some of the verbiage that I tossed in there. Do you guys have any questions in regards to the annual report?
Very nicely put together. I really, you did a good job on it.
Well, thank you.
Nicely presented. Any questions from the council?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks, Jamie.
Yeah. Do you want the report, or do you want to go on to the next? Go ahead, okay. Okay. Oofta. All right. Just a couple other things here. As you guys saw the write-up in the paper, the City Administrator Newsom and I had the opportunity to write a formal statement to that legislative group, and it was very well received. So I was kind of excited about that. Really nervous and stressful, but it was a nice opportunity to have our voices heard about rural ambulance services.
Again, how much time did they give you to put that together?
Well, in the time that I got the email, there was a total of four hours. But by that time, the whole 30 minutes of, oh my goodness, how am I going to do this? And just start writing, yeah. It was a very, very shortened timeframe, but we were able to get a good statement out to them, yeah. In a very quick amount of time.
Good.
I was just asked this last week to work with the local Girl Scout troop. They're looking to obtain their first aid badge, and they have some criteria that they have to meet. So I was able to obtain some permissions via City Administrator Newsom and our Medical Director, Dr. Wilcox, to work with them on obtaining this, this first aid badge, which I'm really excited for them. There's four girls that need to get this done, and this will be a fun accomplishment for them, so I'm really excited to do that. Let's see here. We had kind of a truck issue last week. Pulled their truck out of service for about two hours. One of the four batteries that are actually in our truck, this would be the newer truck, started having some leaking problems and hissing and spitting and all that jazz. So we had to pull that truck out of service for two hours to get it up to Listre Prairie to get new batteries put in. Otherwise, that would have been probably a mild disaster in that little tree that the three are sitting in. But, but yeah, we were able to get up and running right away quick after we got that truck back. To stay in compliance with the state of Minnesota and the EMSRB, we're looking at pricing out EPCR items. And what I mean by that is like right now, our charting is all done by paper. And to, for ease of process, the EMSRB would like everybody to be doing it electronically. So right now, we're currently working on getting quotes as far as what kind of equipment that we're going to need and make sure we're up to par with all the electronic formats. So working on that. And then last but not least, the EMSRB did send out a correspondence regarding these mass vaccinations that will be occurring here in the upcoming months. And they've allowed advanced EMTs and paramedics to now get certified to administer these vaccinations to help public health get this stuff taken care of. So I was able to complete the modules online. I'm officially now in the database to be able to help, and Dr. Wilcox is on board. So I have, I'm just waiting for a phone call now to help him out, so. But other than that, any questions for me? No?
Thanks again, Jamie.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. At this time, I just, I'd been made aware that we do have a guest on Ring Central. Would that guest please identify him or herself? Is there someone on?
This is Curtis Lee.
Okay, Curtis, thank you. All right, next is John, Chief Zaski with the annual report of the fire department. Thank you.
First of all, thanks for having me today. We'll kind of go through this quick quick page here. Picture in the front, I thought was kind of unique. We took this right before we got rid of our Ford pickup, and it was actually taken over at the fairgrounds towards Fairview Park. Our officers for 2021, and we had an open position, but out of tonight, you guys have filled the position for the training and safety officer with Jeremy Otto. The next page is our newest tanker that we just got in 2020. It's a 3,500-gallon Peterbilt chassis tanker. Replaced the 1994 1,000-gallon tanker. We were down nine calls for 2020 versus 2019. Calls were down, but it was probably the most challenging year in my 30 years of being in the fire department. Keeping up with emails from the governor's office, the fire marshal's office, OSHA, how to keep training going so we don't get in trouble. How to do that so we don't get the city in trouble. So it was quite the challenging year. Nothing really stands out here. Mutually aids, we didn't receive any in 2020, so we gave seven new blades this year in 2020. So we're up four from 2019. This is probably the toughest page right here, the objective capital improvement here. So by NFPA standards, your oldest frontline engine can only be 15 years old. So in 2028, the purchase of a new engine has to be made to replace the 98. What I've done in the last few years is we purchased the truck right away when the new model year comes out, so that when we get the truck, it's actually a current model. In the past, we bought the truck, and by the time we got it, it was a year old, so you lost a year of service on the truck. So that's a key one there. We do have the extraction tool that should be replaced in 2021. I don't know where the council has decided on that. Those tools are over 20 years old.
It's in the catalog from the
And we did, I like props, so we just currently got our new turnout gear. We just got them, and they've been the two calls already. So this, when we get going in here further, you'll see all the brands and stuff. This jacket will have to be replaced in 10 years. That's an NFPA and OSHA requirement. We'll be getting new SCBA's are supposed to be shipped April 4th. Those again are NFPA and OSHA required to be replaced in 15 years. Some updates from 2020. We're 29 members strong. We received a grant from Cardio for $1,500, and we bought green bin rescue equipment. We received a grant from CenterPoint for $2,250. We bought rescue equipment that we can use for manholes, green bins, it's got the tripods, all this stuff. We received a USDA grant for $11,900, which we put the money towards the turnout gear. We received a FEMA grant for $149,442.96. That is for the SCBA that will be coming April 4th, and then we'll all have to be fit to us. The nice thing about that with this COVID and everything, every member on their department will have their own mask now. So it'll be in their locker. You don't have to worry about cross-contaminating with somebody else and stuff. We received $6,569 for care's money. We bought two tanks for our SCBA for kilometer tanks, and we bought filters. Where a lot of people are wearing the N-85 mask, we'll have the N-100 mask we can screw onto our face pieces. So the nice thing about that, we can use it not only during the pandemic. If we have a grass fire, we can put the shield on and turn the mask, the filter on, and we don't have to carry that heavy backpack. So that's a nice feature we'll have. In addition, we received $8,556 from border firefighters for training. The Relief donated $7,704 to the department. The Relief actually just purchased a portable generator for the fire department, and we'll be buying 18-foot enclosed trailer for the fire department for the through the Relief Association. This is money that we raised from when we had our meal this year, that we had our drag-up meal and stuff. So we're taking that money and we're putting it back into equipment for the fire department. Some interesting facts here. We spent $6,649 on a tanker too. When I walk in, he just kind of shrugs at me because it's always that truck. Every time the truck moves, it breaks. We spent a total of $24,368 on truck repairs and maintenance. We spent $1,919 on truck equipment, that's hoses and stuff that we blow during the course of the year. Right now, we need to purchase 12 lengths of hose because we did post-testing and we blew that many. So that, that'll be something. I applied for a grant, so we'll see if we get it before I do any purchasing. We spent $4,100 on fuel. We received $3,000 on the sale of the old tanker. The new tanker costs $293,466. For those of you who are on the council, when I met with the council on the townships, I guaranteed them that it wouldn't go over $290,000, or the fire department would pick up the cost, and we did. We made some changes on the trucks, some updates. That's why it went over. The Relief paid $4,655 of that, so the net cost for the townships and the council was $288,810. And then the next page is, I have, so when you know we're talking about the trucks and stuff, I got a picture with each truck, what truck it is right now currently. So you kind of have something to reference when you're talking about the trucks or anything. Other than that, I don't have any more questions for me.
So that Peterbilt that's running up the breakdown, or breaking down a lot, that's the one that will be replaced then in 20?
No.
No?
That is the international tanker, that tanker two.
Oh.
That is the used chassis that was bought and a new tank put on it.
Okay, yep, yep.
The good thing about that truck is it's a 3,500-gallon tank, it's stainless steel. We could easily raise the tank off the truck and put it on a different chassis. That's why we did it that way when we built the truck. That truck, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but somewhere around $45,000 we've spent on repairs on that truck since we've been in service.
So the $45,000, is that part of the Navistar side of it, or is that just?
We replaced the dash module twice, clutch, brakes, radiator. About the only thing we haven't replaced is the motor. That's about the only thing we haven't replaced on the truck. It's, that particular year truck, I want to understand this has its issues. You must be familiar with it.
The city of Minnesota owns about, low over $5,000, so. I didn't have a car, but I'm very familiar with it.
The $3,000, that was the price of that tanker that was sold. Is that about what you thought, or were you surprised that brought that much?
I was shocked that we got that much. I was shocked that we got that much. I figured we'd get about two thousand for the frame was uh, sprung. It actually should have been fixed, but the guy uh, flew out, hired a semi and hauled it back to, was it Tennessee or?
Tennessee or, I think Kentucky, huh? Yeah, one or the other. Any questions of John? All right, thank you very much, John. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work. Um, Public Works January report. Kirby? Good evening.
Good evening.
Now it is. Hi, new faces. Good to be in front of you finally. All right, um, well, since my last update, uh, we've had five snow emergencies where we've called out the graders and the trucks and removed snow. And multiple smaller ones, Daniel and I, uh, we're uptown cleaning up ourselves. Then of course, after the snow emergency ones, there's always days after that where we clean up around town and some piles to move and stuff like that, so. That's kept us busy. Um, also kind of working to streamline snow cleanup for other contractors. Uh, who want to know when the plows are coming out, so put together a list of local contractors. Then I'll send out a text and they can know when the plows are out. We try to do that on Facebook, but it's kind of hard to know always exactly what time we're going out. So hopefully that helps everybody. Um, we had a water main break yesterday morning. I got a call. Um, from a resident who saw water rushing out of the street down by uh, East Elmwood. And called people service. They went and looked at it, thought it was a main break. They called Jerpy. Jerpy was here, Jerpy from Hutch, and they fixed that today.
Or was, was it the pipe pulled apart? Was it bad valve or what?
Uh, well, I just briefly ran into uh, Lee. He said, yeah, it sounded like the pipe just kind of collapsed or came apart. Well, he said there was like a slice taken out of it, so whatever that means, I guess. Uh, that's what he said. We had a power outage a couple Saturdays ago on the twenty-third, uh, morning of the twenty-third, and I was in the south southeast quadrant of town. Uh, McLeod was here and had it fixed in about ninety minutes. They called back, said there was a fuse blown in the ground box in one of the utility corridors. Uh, the street lamp that has been out on the corner of Main Street and County Road seventeen, that intersection, I finally received the replacement for that. Which was covered by a five-year warranty. They first sent me a driver. It's been out for a couple months. They sent me a, a replacement driver. That didn't work, so now I have to replace the whole light. So that, that should get up this week. Uh, skating rink, we working on that this last cold spell. Finally got the hockey rink going. Uh, the outdoor rink, sadly to say, I don't think that's going to happen this year. We just could not get good ice on that, so. Uh, the snow blower had some issues, mechanical breakdowns. Uh, got those fixed. Nothing real major. Um, it does seem like the bearings and the auger drive sprockets are getting, starting to wear out. Um, hoping to get through the season yet, and then uh, it's probably going to have to go in for repair. Water softener checkups, I, um, in the midst of doing that yet, we had the shop. In light of the chloride issue that was brought to our attention, that we better look at what the city's got going for water softeners. Our softener at the shop is, was shot pretty much, so why not replace that? Um, the one at the, in the basement of the PD EMS ambulance building is super old, probably as old as I am, so we're going to have why not check that out. Probably going to have to be replaced. Um, Lion Center is good. They have to get here yet. At the community center, check that out. Um, Tim is putting everything on, on demand, so it's just going to regenerate as needed instead of scheduled. Got the sweeper back. That was in St. Paul getting repairs, just postseasonal repair. Hydraulic, some hydraulic issues, uh, new water hoses, loose linkage parts, pretty typical stuff. Uh, the loader waiting on parts for that, that has hydraulic and transmission leaks, um, and that'll get fixed right here in town at Peeps. We're able to use it yet luckily. Just got to keep the fluids filled up. Uh, also I was, I worked with Chief Koneczki on the truck routing throughout town, which he presented to you guys. Uh, so I'll wait to hear back on final decisions about that.
It's on the agenda right after the meeting.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was on the list and it's.
Okay.
First reading is on right after.
Oh, okay, good. Sure. Yeah, then I, I can plot out the proper signage, give them order and, and post it. Um, also worked with Haley on the dog park planning over at the compost site. Other than that, yeah, we're hoping to get waxing the community center floors, get Daniel trained in on that. And get that accomplished here in the near future. Otherwise, just plug it along, I guess, so.
Was that real slushy snow we had a few weeks ago that I know, you had it, you had it uh, down the center of Main Street and then you must have blown it at night. Was that pretty hard on equipment?
It is.
Because I think it probably refroze a little bit even.
Yeah, um, yeah, it is.
Okay.
The blower we have is unique in that it can handle that stuff if, if you're careful. Uh, without a whole lot of problems, but it did, and I've, I went through that stuff before, but this last one I did a couple things broke on it. So I had to scoop the rest of it, but it's running again. But yeah, it'll probably need a little work after the season. I don't think it's been in for anything major since I've been here, but it's getting at that age, things are wearing. So.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Questions for Kirby? Anything?
Thank you and good job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Kirby. Appreciate it. All right, item D, December twenty twenty expenditures report.
These are not the actual expenditures. Keep that in mind. There's a lot of highlights on here and you will see. I wanted to point out areas where we are over budget. Elections, and that's because we prepared money to purchase all those election booths, so you're not seeing both sides. We've always done expenditures, so you're not seeing like grant revenue that came in, that's why you bought more. Planning and zoning, about forty-five thousand dollars over budget. That was because of the full-time position. And uh, Darren's wages were higher because there were a lot of buildings from us this year. Police department was thirty-two thousand dollars over budget, and that was a lot relating to staffing. Fire stations and buildings, so that is the amount we pay into their um, fire relief for their pension was higher than had been budgeted. Subtle defense, um, replacements maybe to the sirens, like we have batteries I looked at, why that was higher. Library, the staffing costs were under budgeted, so the bill we received from the county was higher than had been budgeted. These are the transfers. Remember, we approved the big resolution of all the different transfers on a few meetings ago. That was that. It had been budgeted to transfer three hundred thirteen thousand. We transferred much more. That has to do with paying off that bond for two thousand nine street improvement one. Cemetery fund over budget. Cemetery fund is going over budget. Cemetery raised the price of the plots, so hopefully that will help. We see, um, storm sewer. This one is always um, notoriously over budget and and not sitting at the fifty percent that it should be at in the reserve. That's one thing when we look at enterprise funds that I would like to look at this year, and I have to raise the storm sewer rates. CIPA just highlighted how much money was sitting in there. I still have to finish breaking down where that money is sitting in the balance. We've got at the end of the year, five hundred and forty-four thousand at the end of twenty twenty, so that didn't take into account what we budgeted for in twenty twenty-one yet. But that needs to be allocated amongst the different budget, uh, budgets. Two thousand nine street improvement project, that's one we paid off. That's why that one is really out of whack. It took us one hundred and sixty-six thousand over because we paid it off. Uh, the, the fire tanker wasn't budgeted correctly, so we're twenty-two thousand over budget. So this, this does not take into account, like I said, extra revenue that comes into account to just being like, but overall, most of the departments did pretty well. I didn't point out that most departments, there was only police and elections really that were over budget. Otherwise departments.
You were totally surprised on the police because we had one person out for, how many months they was, it was a while and a little bit.
I had been watching that police budget all year and saw that everything was over budget. Because when that person was out, then someone else was paid overtime.
That's true.
Kirby was under budget, Public Works.
So just so I understand, the five hundred and forty-four thousand that uh, is the CIP that needs to be distributed yet?
Yeah, we need to allocate that.
And that will affect a lot, some of these numbers that you've talked about now? It won't. It won't change those at all?
That's a separate CIP, four oh one fund, that won't change the numbers.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
Concerns.
Concerns. Anything? All right, we will move on to the ordinances and resolutions, the first reading of ordinance three thirty-three.
This was brought by Chief Koneczny at the last meeting. Remember, we had it said this now. Has developed, added something by October, April, September. So Chief Koneczny was able to see it in an ordinance form, not just last time. I look back, it hasn't been approved by resolution, the truck route. And Chief would like to see it as part of our ordinance, so I put something together and it is back tonight for the first reading.
Okay, I think that's everything we had talked about as far as changes at last meeting. It looks like they've been incorporated into this.
Yeah, I think it looks good.
Mm-hmm, I do too. I like the way it's laid out. Yep.
Makes, it's very smooth.
Yeah. I look at the uh, truck route as it affects uh, Baker Street and, and uh, you know, some of those around by the old canning factory. It's just a shame that that has to be a truck route. But it's just, it's just a part of the location where those buildings, where those residential lots are. I mean, it's, we need to uh, allow trucks to be able to service that larger building or larger concern, just so happens it has to involve two of the residential streets, but. So if there's anything that council feels needs to be changed, now is the time to do it.
The second reading.
Second reading, it's too late to change.
Just thinking on the brown as far as like tree trimming, you know, some of these roads have changed. We may have to keep an eye on the heights and the branches and the trucks are going through.
Yeah, yeah, true.
So can it, it, it pretty much stay the same or other?
I don't know if you'll be able to see it though.
Second Avenue that turns right at the bowling alley. Second Avenue turns at the bowling alley and heads south. That goes all the way down, all the way down to the canning, the old canning factory site. That's probably the biggest change.
And then around the hospital, all the way around that block. That was the other one that I think got added.
Yeah, that was one that you brought up.
Is that okay, is that okay if I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, and in, in just talking with the chief, he thought that there was, is there any credence to how it, the truck routes really are for regular truck usage of, of roads, or, I mean, would it have to include? That's where our thinking lied was, well, if, if they're, if they have an exemption just for delivery and it's periodic, would it have to include the, the roads that only have a couple inches of asphalt that are susceptible to getting busted up by bigger trucks? And I mean, I don't, and if they're not using them much, I guess it doesn't really matter anyways, but.
Well, one of those instances would be.
Maybe that just complicates.
If, if a truck does turn off at the bowling alley and wants to head to Jerry's Foods, he goes all the way down Second Avenue, which is fine. But the minute he turns off on Alden, then he's, he's not on a truck route anymore, but he needs to get there to make his delivery, so.
Yeah.
They haven't though, never have any of these?
Yeah, probably.
Okay. Yeah, that's, we maybe just complicated things. Okay, that's all I was wondering.
Okay, any concerns on what you see on the proposed truck route map? Hearing none, I will go down then as the first reading of ordinance three thirty-three. And we'll take it up again at a future meeting, I presume next meeting. All right, moving on. No unfinished business, new business, item number eleven, approve or deny memorandum of understanding Sibley County Emergency Management in the city of Arlington.
Emergency management director Andrew Kayden, uh, called me, came to visit me about this. The community center will be used as a location for the COVID vaccines for the general public. And uh, Andrew would like to see Andrew Kayden ask that we have something like this in place before that happens. I don't have a date and I do not have any details on the vaccinations yet.
Do you know how large an area it's going to be serving?
I do not know that. I don't know how much of area we will cover. I do not have any of the details worked out yet.
Yeah.
And.
Uh, Mr. Merrick?
Yes, Ross.
Yeah, uh, Heather told me on the phone, he thought that they only need two days. That he had no idea what days. It depends on when they get vaccines, uh, delivered, available to the county.
Okay.
And do we get right for that or do we just?
This is considered an emergency, so we do not get them.
Ah, so it's, it's.
And they take top priority if someone else, uh, Attorney Ernestson did have a chance to review this agreement. And I did talk to, it's me for McLeod, Sibley Public Health that'll be working on this. And I did tell them the dates that dance were in here. They were looking at initially February sometime. They don't really know. And I did tell them dance is always here on Wednesdays. If we could avoid a Wednesday, I would appreciate it. And I told them we have council meetings, just so they know. Meetings on Monday nights generally, so.
Well, I mean, if it's just going to be two or three days, whenever it happens and it happens to fall on a council meeting night, I'd like to just say that we can go to EMS building and hold our council meeting or something like that.
Or we could probably just close our door.
Close the door.
Because they're going to be using a pool to be present.
Yeah.
Right, well, I mean, I'm, I'm just offering suggestions.
Sure. Yep. I'm sure we can accommodate them and.
So.
All right.
Added one thing to be mentioned. And it was number four under the council agrees to the following. It is understood that Sibley County authorities will give the city of Arlington as much advancement as possible if disasters are on the bound. So there's some scheduling such as pandemic immunization, vaccination programs, so as to avoid conflicts with city center private events.
Cool.
Yeah, so are, would this group be coming in and setting something up, or do we have to, you know?
They would be setting one.
They would set it?
We will.
Just provide the space.
Provide the space.
Do we have to pass the resolution for it?
Just a simple approve, so just a simple motion would do it.
Oh, make a motion to approve the agreement as written?
Success.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Batchor to approve the agreement with the Sibley County Emergency Management. Um, and regarding the use of the. um, and regarding the use of the community center for all hazard emergency facility usage. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, if I ever say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carried. Okay, item twelve, city council goals.
I think I did this, um, we talked about it at a workshop, but we've never talked about the council meeting. We came up with three, unless anyone has more quarterly annexation, continue to pay down debt twenty, twenty years CIP.
I like it.
Um, just one question about continue to pay down debt, how are we going to measure that? In other words, at the end of the year, what's going to be the, what is our goal by the end of the year to, as far as paying it down and that type of thing?
There's certain bonds we want to pay off next, like the two thousand, you know, probably just the two thousand twelve, if ten's, we need to turn around if, if we're going to tackle another one.
Yeah.
Would be fast.
Well, I think it'd be a good idea to look at them and see what we can afford. Right, or whatever one's costing us, and whatever, whatever makes sense.
I think he kind of already sort of prioritized it. It's a matter of looking at what we've got with the bonds and when they're coming due, to where we're not getting, um, yeah, penalized for pulling, you know, well, paying up early for the, the CDs for early, uh, retraction, so if there's.
Right, like we can't cash them in whenever.
Yeah.
Okay.
If there's, if there's one coming due, uh, we talked around, I thought it was around two, two and a half million. Um, that we had excess, um, above what we wanted to have as a balance for emergency based on recommendations. So, yeah, and, you know, without knowing those numbers, it's kind of hard to say, but if we had one come, if we had a CD come through that was, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand, you know, what would we do with that?
Mm-hmm.
I, I would also, I wouldn't want to add new debt while we were paying off the other one, so, you know, continuing to talk about the water treatment project based on what funds we have in the actual, uh, fund for that, you know, let's just say we had hypothetically, we had a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, well, we needed two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand to pay for that right now. Personally, I would like to see us do that before we took out new debt.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So maybe, maybe that would be an amendment to, you know, I, it says continue to pay down, or, you know.
Minimize.
Yeah.
Minimize that.
Mm-hmm. How about the, uh, ten to twenty-year CIP is, how does the council feel about the, that stretching it out to planning twenty years down the road?
Well, I think, you know, uh, John just came through and he's, he did that last year, we saw, um, a lot of long-term stuff, and he's, he's planning. And I, I think it's the, that, that we started talking through and, and starting to budget for those items. The water treatment is a fine example to where, you know. Yeah, so if, if we were able to get through this one without having to go finance, then we start thinking about what that next, either twenty or thirty years brings to start trying to budget for, you know, probably the total replacement by that time, if they're, you know, if they're saying fifty years. Uh, you know, today, could we sneak ten years out of it? I don't know, probably not, maybe, maybe just sneak by five. Uh, but we'd be planning to put the funds aside for that future, whatever it may be. And in twenty years, who knows what the standards and regulations could be by that time.
So twenty years probably does make, make sense to take a look, okay?
Now, if we were to add anything, I could even do it on the R net, because there are other projects, they're on this. You know, like you said, John always says fire trucks down there, he's talking about twenty, forty-four, I mean, that's twenty-two years away, twenty-fifteen.
Ambulance, this community center, you know, what does this building need in twenty years? Um.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I think it's a good, starting with.
Okay. Anything else on that? I mean, if we just consensus approve those three as attainable goals for this year, or something to keep working towards? Committee updates, any committee meetings that anyone wants to report on? Okay? Open discussion, anything? Attorney Ernestson, do you have anything that you need to share with the council?
Not at this point, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you.
I would like to bring up that I really appreciated the, um, update that we got from you, Amy, uh, last week. I was going to respond and tell you, but I forgot to do that. But I do, I really appreciate that, I think that, um, helped tremendously with communication, telling them what's going on, especially in the off week that we're not all together and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
And I know it takes time to do it, but it was very well received.
Yep. Good point. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Second? Motion by Councilmember Batch, or second by Councilmember Thomas, to, Morgan, I'm sorry. I just, I knew it came from that direction, but Councilmember Morgan, to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, meeting adjourned at seven twenty-seven.